Okay. No, he does have a thinking space. Okay. And are you so far between your life? I don't know. Okay.
Yeah. And where our iCloud account does.
Oh, not now.
Can you? Yeah, can you? That's better? Okay, great, thanks.
Right here. See now, it's not red. So when you were speaking.
Okay. I think Laura can also control it. I don't know. I haven't used that before. They might have been doing that. That's what they do with this in our last hearings where they want to have the speakers and then speak for two minutes.
Oh, and then cut them off?
Yeah. It should be, I would just, if you leave it on, Laura will take care of it.
Right. All right. And this is for the side doors? Yeah, I was told by the side door. That's what Darren says.
Yes. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, I haven't given you. So I'll ask on that next.
Well, you haven't moved up on the ranks yet. Yeah, I think.
Something for recent improvements that don't mention.
Don't think that. It's a secret.
That's where my parents live.
In Chicago.
Oh. It's time. Okay. I call this meeting to order. Let us stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Sotile.
Present.
Commissioner Edison.
Present.
Commissioner Serko.
Present.
Commissioner Moros. And Commissioner Pollock Rude.
Present.
Okay.
Welcome to the Alcohone Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Alcohone website. Appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 PM Monday, April 14th, 2025. It must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either a non-agenda or an agenda item tonight, please fill out a request to speak card located by the agenda and turn it in to the secretary who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. We ask that you give us your name, spell in your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium as well as the other monitors in the chambers will show time counting down. Thirty seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have thirty seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the chair of the commission and not to individual commissioners or staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you have not done so already. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 114-79, a commissioner who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission other than an unescorted view of the subject property is required to disclose such information at the hearing. At this time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward under public comment except to refer it to staff for administration or place it on a future agenda. Is there, is there anyone who wishes to address a commission under public comment? Please come forward. Were any public comments submitted prior to the meeting? No? Okay, thank you.
And no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does the commission wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No.
Does the staff wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No changes from staff.
Okay.
I move to adopt the minutes as recorded.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Serko, second by Commissioner Moros. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay. The second item is the Palm Residence Single Room Occupancy, SRO. Extend approval period for one year and it's CQ exempt, and the staff recommendation is approved. However, I'd like to point out that this was, the planner on this is Maissa Madzini, and she's the planner in waiting. Raise your hand. Let's welcome her here, okay? Staff.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners, if I can get. Perfect. My name is Spencer Hayes, and I'm the associate planner in community development. The first item for your consideration is a request for an extension of time of a conditional use permit to convert a motel to a single-room occupancy residence. The request is submitted on behalf of the Meridisic Family Trust. On April 4th, 2023, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit number 2022-0014 for the conversion of a motel to an 11-unit, single-room occupancy residence. The zoning code allows for an extension of time of up to one year beyond the original approval timeframe, which was two years in this case. It should be noted that building, the Building Safety Division received an application for a building permit to formalize the conversion on March 27th, 2025, just a few days ago. And that building permit would need to be issued prior to the expiration date in order for a CUP, the CUP to become effective. The applicant also provided an outline of their anticipated milestones, which includes project completion within the calendar year. Notably, there have been no updates or modifications to SRO regulations in the zoning code since the project was approved in 2023. And just as a reminder, this is the, the subject motel for reference. The address is 1349 East Main Street. And that concludes staff's presentation, but we're open to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Now, this is not going to be open to public comment because it's a motion to continue. So if someone wants to make a motion to continue, you're welcome to do so at this point in time, I mean to approve.
So this is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sorry. For the record, I would note that the applicant has been in contact with staff, but, and we have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
So this is, the building permit has been requested but hasn't been signed yet, and they've got three days left. So we're giving them extensions so they can get it done. Okay. Yeah. Cool. I'll make a motion to adopt the next resolution in order approving the time extension for CUP number 2022-0014.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Serko, second by Commissioner Pollock Rude. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Item three is volunteers in medicine, nonprofit medical clinic. It's CQ exempt, and staff recommendation is to approve. Staff.
All right. Thank you. The second item for your consideration is a conditional use permit for a nonprofit medical clinic operated from an existing religious facility. The project is submitted by Studio E Architects on behalf of Volunteers in Medicine, or BIM. Volunteers in Medicine proposes to operate from roughly 675 square feet of existing office space within Good Shepherd Ministry Center, which is formerly Alcohone First United Baptist Church, at 772 South Johnson Avenue. The project site is within the low-density residential designation and within the residential single-family 6,000-square-foot zone. The residential land use table indicates that religious facilities and nonprofit service organizations devoted to serving the general public require approval of a conditional use permit as requested. The site is currently governed by a conditional use permit number 79, which approved an expansion to an existing religious facility in 1959. It should also be noted that VIM was approved to operate from another local religious facility in 2003. And unlike that, the current proposal, VIM installed modular offices at 1456 East Madison Avenue, which is the United Methodist Chapel Valley Church. According to city records, we have received no complaints or there have been no open code compliance cases for VIM at their current location. Here's the proposed site plan and project location. The religious facility and offices are located on the northwest corner of South Johnson and Grant Avenues. Conditional use permit number 79 approves of parking across the street from the religious facility, and the proposed use does not require additional parking. It should be noted that there is a publicly available ADA parking space directly adjacent to the entrance of the religious facility on Grant Avenue near letter D on this exhibit. And then here's the existing floor plan configuration. VIM proposes to utilize existing office spaces, and no construction or site improvements are proposed. The existing configuration allows for two exam rooms, a consultation room, reception desk, and small waiting area. As outlined in the staff report, the proposed use is relatively low volume with approximately 10 in-clinic visits throughout the week in administration. There are four primary care physicians and seven specialty providers, which range from chiropractic services to diabetes care and dietitian services. Radiology, imaging, and other specimen collection are contracted to off-site medical providers. Since there's no change in office occupancy and no modifications are proposed, the building official determined that a building permit is not required for this project. It's proposed that the project is CQ exempt pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15301, for existing facilities, since the proposed project is a negligible, negligible expansion of an existing office use and does not include new construction. The proposal allows for the operation of a nonprofit medical clinic serving uninsured and income-qualified residents in Alcohone in the broader East County area, and staff recommends approval of the CQ exemption and conditional use permit number 2025-0003, subject to conditions. And we're available to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Spencer. I don't have any questions. Are there any planning commissioners that question?
Just a quick, easy question. What are the hours going to be?
They do vary. It's actually shown on their proposed site plan in the agenda packet. From what I recall, I believe, I think it was 8:00, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, generally speaking. And then specialty providers kind of come on random days throughout the month. So it's not necessarily, necessarily specific hours for those specialty providers.
But not 24 hours?
No, not 24 hours.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, let's open it up to public speaking. Is there, do we have any cards on this agenda item?
We do have a speaker card. Eric Naslund.
Good evening. I'm Eric Naslund with Studio E Architects, and I'm here representing Volunteers in Medicine and the Good Shepherd Ministry Center. I'm available for questions only. I don't need to make a presentation. Terrific job, Spencer. Well done.
Mr. Naslund, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yes. N is in Nancy, A-S-L-U-N-D.
Okay. I don't have any. Do you have any questions? No? You're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Any other speaker cards?
Not for this item.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second down.
A motion made by Commissioner Serko, second by Commissioner Edison. Please vote.
And motion carries by unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay. The next item.
Well, should we adopt this? Well, let's. Tell you what, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to move to adopt the next resolution in order approving the proposed CQ exemption and CUP number 2025-0003, subject to conditions.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Moros, second by Commissioner Pollock Rude. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay, the next item. The Palms Restaurant and Banquet Hall. Consider revocation of conditional use permit number 2115. It's CQ exempt, and staff recommendation is to revoke 2115 if the business is not operating in accordance with required conditions of approval. Would you like to bring us up to date?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure. So this is a staff-initiated request that the Planning Commission has been working on for more than one year now. Just for background purposes, 143 East Main Street is operated as the Palms Restaurant and Banquet Hall, and again, is authorized by conditional use permit number 2115. It is authorized to operate as a restaurant with on-sale alcohol sales, live entertainment, as well as ancillary banquet use. When approving the original request in 2010, the city council did find that the operation of the use as a restaurant during normal retail business hours and evenings was necessary in order to promote an active retail corridor in the downtown area. So here's just an image of the subject site. Just for additional background, over the past year, beginning on February 20th of 2024, the Planning Commission did review the conditional use permit after complaints were received the business was not operating as a restaurant. At that time, the business operator attended the meeting, and the Planning Commission directed staff to work with the operator at that time. Then in March of 2024, the business operator provided staff with a copy of a restaurant menu. So following additional complaints, city staff conducted two inspections of the business during October of 2024, and each time staffer the Palms had indicated that they were not open as a restaurant to the public. Then on November 19th of 2024, an additional review of the CUP was conducted by the Planning Commission, and testimony was received that the business was not operating in a manner or was operating in a manner that's substantially similar to a private club, and that they didn't have a printed menu at that time. So based on that hearing, that's when the Planning Commission directed staff to schedule the revocation hearing. So the revocation hearing was then scheduled for December 17th of 2024. Unfortunately, at that meeting, we had commissioners that were absent, and so the revocation hearing was continued to February of 2025 in order to allow the applicant to have the benefit of a full commission. Ultimately, on February 4th of 2025, the applicant's representative, who was an attorney, spoke, provided some additional information to the commission, asked for some additional time in order to continue to work with staff to bring the business into compliance with the conditions of approval. Following the last hearing, I did meet with the attorney representing the operator. I gave some suggestions that were included as attachments in the agenda report. So I asked them, I think one of the things that the commission struggled with during the last hearing was actual data or facts with regards to whether or not they were operating as a restaurant. So my suggestion to the operator was to prepare a spreadsheet that showed the individual dates, the number of diners that were served, and then actual receipts related to alcohol and related to food. I had shared that with the operator and the attorney. I followed up with them twice since that last hearing, asking for updates and if they were going to be able to provide any information. Ultimately, I got an email back from the, the attorney indicating that the applicant was working on that, but that they hadn't submitted anything to me. Even up to today's hearing, I haven't received anything in response to that spreadsheet request. In response to the updated public notice for the revocation hearing, we did receive public comments. I wanted to note that the downtown Alcohone Business Partners provided a, a two-page comment letter that was fairly, fairly detailed. I just highlighted two, two items here, which the business partners identified, which were ongoing violations that are having a real impact on the downtown environment and the economic vitality of downtown. And additionally, they also recommend a revocation of the conditional use permit is necessary at this juncture. So staff's recommendation for this evening is to conduct the public hearing and then to adopt the next resolution in order of revoking the conditional use permit. Did get a couple of questions throughout the day-to-day, and one thing that I wanted to note for the commission's benefit is that if the conditional use permit were to be revoked, a restaurant is still a permitted use within the downtown area. So the revocation of the conditional use permit would only result in no longer allowing alcohol sales at the establishment, eliminating the live entertainment, as well as the ancillary banquet hall use. So if someone were to come forward in the future wanting to add those things, they could apply for a new permit, and that would go through the appropriate process. But the restaurant, just to confirm, could continue operating if the commission were to revoke the conditional use permit this evening.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'm glad that you clarified on that one, that it can still continue as a restaurant because it is already zoned for that.
Do you have a question?
Any questions?
Yeah. You said it could operate as a restaurant, but it cannot serve alcohol?
Correct. The conditional use permit does authorize alcohol sales. So if the conditional use permit were to be revoked, the, a future operator could come in and apply for a new permit for alcohol sales?
Okay.
In order to have the alcohol sales, of course, you have to have the ABC license.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do they, someone currently carries an ABC license there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Hold on. Okay. Well, this is a continuance from the previous public hearing, so we'll continue that. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do. The first one is Vince Catula.
Would you please come forward? And spell your last name for us, please.
My last name is K-A-T-T-O-U-L-A. If you'd just give me a moment to set up, please.
And do you represent the property owner, or you represent the business owner?
I represent the new ownership that took over, that's in the process of taking over. We assumed operations on March twenty-sixth. In the staff report, it had indicated that the business was in the process of being sold. The previous owners are no longer in the picture and will not be representing the Palms Banquet Hall and Restaurant tonight or moving forward. The other thing that I want to mention through the chair is a restaurant is not going to survive here without alcohol sales. It's going to shutter, just like any other restaurant. People go eat, they want to drink, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But if I may begin, Chairman, I'd like five minutes for my presentation, if that's okay?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Chairman Sotila and members of the Alcoa Planning Commission. My name is Vince Catula, and I represent the soon-to-be new owners of the Palms Restaurant and Banquet Hall, RM Inc. With me today are two of the family members of the new ownership group, Jeff and Ramon Mansour. We are here before you today seeking your confirmation that the Palms Restaurant and Banquet Hall is in fact operating under the conditions imposed by CUP two-one-one-five, and to reject staff's recommendation to revoke the CUP. Just to provide a quick overview of the site, Palms is located at one-four-three East Main Street between Magnolia and Claydale Avenue. The site consists of approximately a seven thousand two hundred square foot building that currently serves as a restaurant and banquet hall. As you see here, the site is permitted for a restaurant with onsite alcohol sales, live entertainment, ancillary banquet use, a non-gambling cardroom, and an ABC type forty-seven full liquor license. It is important to note that in neither the municipal code or the business licenses, you see here, we are restricted to fifteen percent banquet use. Nowhere in the municipal code, and nowhere in the CUP, and nowhere in the business licenses does it say, are we limited to fifteen percent. We'll get to that in a little bit. Want to go over a few definitions, and these are all straight out of the municipal code. Accessory or ancillary means a use that is subordinate to the primary use of the property. Again, it does not say fifteen percent. It says subordinate. So my first question to the commission and to staff is, what's the threshold? And where is a threshold indicated in writing? Next, a bona fide eating place, which is one of our conditions, and I'll bring up the conditions here shortly, is what our CUP requires us to operate it as, and it means a place which is regularly and in a bona fide manner used and kept open for the serving of meals, directly from the ABC website, as required by the conditions. Club means an association of persons for some common purpose, but not including groups organized primarily to render a service which is customarily carried on as a business. By City of Alcoa Code definition, we do not fall under the category of a private club. The Palms has never required membership, has never been managed or controlled by a fraternal organization or union group. What Palms may appear to be, to some, which I might add is subjective, appearance is always subjective, is completely different than what we are. The staff report presented to you tonight is grossly inaccurate and misleading. It should be objective and solely based on facts, not appearances as its sole references. If I may, I'd like to share with you what the facts are. The Palms is a restaurant that's open to the public seven days a week, between four PM and one AM. Customers come in, usually after work, kind of like a happy hour, with their friends and family, sit down at a large communal-style table, order some food, order some drinks, and maybe start a friendly card game or a backgammon game, and spend the evening eating, drinking, socializing, and generating sales tax. Staff's recommendation tonight to revoke the CUP is under the false premise that the approval is being or has been exercised contrary to what the terms or conditions of approval are. I want to take this opportunity to go through the conditions of approval together and discuss how we actually are abiding by the conditions of approval and what they imposed. Here are all of our conditions. The one in question is that the restaurant shall be operated as a bona fide eating place in accordance with the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control requirements. As we just saw in the definition, a few slides ago, we are a bona fide eating place. I will repeat this once more. Bonafide eating place means a place which is regularly and in a bona fide manner used and kept open for the serving of meals to guests for compensation, has a suitable kitchen facilities connected, containing convenience for cooking and an assortment of foods. To provide even further evidence that we are in fact a restaurant, here's a video that was taken just this afternoon. And mind you, that I understand that what may have happened under the previous ownership is well documented and agreed upon, but since our takeover last week, we have taken all of the planning commission's past recommendations and have implemented them. And aside from this video, I've also brought with me today a copy of the food orders that we've taken last Wednesday, when we took over, last Saturday, and last night. I'm happy to hand these out to the commission, if it's okay with the chair.
Yes, give it to the secretary.
In addition, we've created draft menus that we plan on going live. I'll be handing those out as well. As I mentioned, this is the video just taken earlier today. What you saw in the previous picture staff showed was the vacant patio area. Here, we've kept with the theme of the restaurant by adding over a dozen date palms. We have a podium where the hostess will meet out front. Clear, restaurant opens at four with hours of operation. Communal-style family tables. Four sixty-five-inch plasma-screen TVs playing sports, like a sports bar would. Here you see some additional photos of the restaurant. There was a recommendation at the last PC hearing to install a partition wall or some sort of screening to reduce the bulk of the restaurant when it's not used as a banquet hall. We heard the commission loud and clear. We appreciated and we implemented the recommendation, which you see here off to the right of the larger picture. The family to the right here came in last night for dinner as a family with their four young children and to catch up on a soccer game. Recently, the city received a letter from the downtown business partners claiming that the Palms creates a dead frontage along a key downtown block undermining efforts to create a lively and inviting atmosphere for shoppers and visitors. The pictures you see here are all taken earlier today and are prime examples of the definition of dead frontage. Graffiti on a sidewalk, sidewalks that haven't been pressure washed in years, a small homeless encampment in front of the downtown cafe-bar-and-grill, trash, and closed-down businesses. This is the Palms frontage, quite the contrary of dead frontage, if you ask me. I'm going to share a quick story with you guys today. Earlier, I went to the Palms to take all the pictures that you guys just saw. Right outside our doors, there was a homeless person screaming obscenities and doing what homeless people do.
Your time is up.
Can I wrap up?
Sure. How long do you need?
One minute.
Okay, fine.
I called the police. Police came, four guys came, two from the front, two from the back. By that time, the homeless guy left, but they've never been in there before. They said, this is a really cool place. What do you guys do here? Kind of explained the banquet. We do quinceañeras, we do bar mitzvahs, we do weddings, we do baptisms, all different types of events, and we're also a restaurant open to the public. I told them what's happening and what the city's trying to do tonight. One of them rolled their eyes and said, great, another vacant building. Don't exasperate police resources by creating another vacant building here. Our request is to confirm, based on this information, and again, I don't know what happened in the past, but I could tell you what happened since last week and what's going to be happening moving forward, to confirm that we are now operating under the CUP conditions, reject staff's recommendation, and I would even go as far as to promote economic development, liveliness, and attract visitors and shoppers to the downtown area by allowing up to thirty percent of the year to be allowed for banquets and private events. You're promoting economic development here, and to show that we want to be good partners with the city and the downtown partnership, require us to come back every six months for a CUP checkup. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Yes, I do have a question. Have you submitted to the city proof of sale?
We just took over last Wednesday. That was our submittal tonight.
And that's your proof of sale?
That's our proof of sale.
Do you have any legal document?
Oh, I'm sorry, proof of sale from the business.
Correct.
They're all being transferred right. They are all being transferred as of October twenty-sixth. Staff had mentioned in the staff report that they received an email from the previous attorney saying that it's in the process of being sold.
So it's in escrow right now?
It's in escrow.
So, okay. So it's not completed yet?
It's not completed, but it will be completed.
It's pending.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And this, just a moment. On the original condition of approval, I remember reading that it was limited to fifteen percent use as a banquet hall. It was, and the actual, I read it myself, and in 2010, I was here, and I remember seeing fifteen percent on that. Let me ask the staff. Do you have it there?
Yes, in the actual conditions of approval, it just talks about ancillary banquet hall use. It's not defined with a specific percentage. The fifteen percent percentage just comes from other zoning regulations that weren't cited in this presentation. But it's, so in a, as an example, in a industrial zone, you can have incidental retail sales of up to fifteen percent, or the opposite, in a commercial zone, if you wanted to do wholesale use, you could have incidental wholesale use of up to fifteen percent. So it's a common metric that we use in order to quantify incidental. The other thing that I would reference as part of staff's presentation, we talked about how the city council was very clear when they approved this, that they wanted to ensure that the restaurant was the primary use and that it, and that it continued to operate as a restaurant in order to maintain that vibrancy within the downtown area. So I just want to emphasize that that was part of the discussion at the council. So although it may not be specified in the actual conditions, that was the expectation as part of the conditional use permit. I would also note that one of the conditions of approval requires the business to operate in a compatible fashion with the downtown area, and so I think that's one of the other issues that you're seeing come through that's inconsistent with the conditional use permit and the comments that you receive from the downtown Alcoa Business Partners. Just something else to take into consideration.
I remember reading somewhere fifteen percent, now that's, that's why I was...
Yes, so fifteen percent is just the common incidental aspect that is used for zoning purposes.
Okay.
I would also note, I know the applicant or the speaker indicated a desire to increase incidental up to thirty percent. That could be accomplished through an amendment to the conditional use permit. So tonight, we're not looking at amending the conditional use permit, nor are we looking at renegotiating conditions of approval. We're just looking at whether or not the facility has been operated in accordance with the conditions of approval, and whether or not the approval should be revoked. And I also wanted to mention with regards to the issue of the separation, during the last hearing, when we talked about inserting a separation in the middle of the business, I did indicate to the applicant as well as the attorney that, that staff wouldn't support just installing that because we needed to be able to evaluate and analyze that within the context of the conditional use permit, because the whole intent of this isn't to wall off a portion of the business and then have, you know, private facilities in the back. It's to, for the whole business to be operated as a restaurant, just with incidental, essentially one, one-time-per-week banquet use.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yeah, I must have been mistaken. I remember seeing fifteen percent somewhere. However, you know, you have not been in the previous meetings that we have had, and the witnesses that were, that were here are stated contrary to what you're stating here this evening. So it's, there's a disjunction in between what the prior witnesses said or the previous owners and what is being said this evening. Now, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions that they want to ask you.
I, well, you can go for it. Go ahead.
Just really quick, because I know you're now in the process of purchasing this business. Now, when you were purchasing this, usually I do sales a lot, Realtor, so do they inform you of what was going on or what has transpired thus far regarding, because you know a lot about what needs to be done, so I'm sure they shared some of it with you, and you chose to take that on. So I'm just wondering, knowing what we were going to do, have you spoken with Noah, anyone at, regarding the sale, or how to rectify this to keep?
I notified staff that we were in the process of acquiring the business, and I was aware, I am aware of what was going to take place tonight. So this was our effort to try to salvage a business in Alcoa, try to bring something to be in compliance and be a positive contribution to the community, which is why we're here tonight.
I appreciate your presentation, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rose?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, Commissioner Edison?
So you're not, you're not the owner as of today?
As of today, we are in escrow to close and acquire the site.
But you're not it?
We have control over the site, so anytime a PSA is executed, you have control over a site during escrow.
I guess part of the frustrations that we're having is that this is the fourth or fifth meeting that we've had, and it's one person after another, and now we're, the last meeting was supposed to be council, and now we're maybe in the ninth hour, we hear of this. It's frustrating for me, and now I see, you know, it's great that you're bringing in the sales, but that's, that's just a week. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't really say a lot for the overall year that we've been dealing with this. I mean, a week is, is a small microcosm of, of what's been going on in there, and I do appreciate, you know, that you've taken the presentation as sound, but it doesn't, it doesn't, my overall problem with this is that it has been a struggle to get this particular property into compliance with the CUP. It's been a struggle to get the current, the current owner to communicate with staff. It's been a struggle to get consistent statements, even with the attorneys here. Now we have a, now we have a new partner to deal with, and it just seems like... Now we have a, now we have a new partner to deal with, and it just seems like every time that the staff asks for just to, to follow the CUP, that it's just like the bare minimum to get us there, and now we have a new person saying, "Hey, no, everything's gonna be fine." It's difficult for us, given that, at least for me, I'll speak for me, it's difficult given the history of the past year, you just coming in saying, "Okay, everything's gonna be fine." You just got here, so it's kind of hard for me.
Through the chair, Commissioner Edison, that was the whole purpose of us bringing in the evidence, the concrete evidence, to not say we need some more time, but to show you that since we've taken over, since we've sampled the business, we have implemented those changes that you have been so emptily promised over the last year. I hear you. You were promised a whole bunch of stuff that did not take place, and it only just took a few days for us to implement. And so perhaps the issue wasn't necessarily the business, perhaps the issue was the operators, which is why we're here now.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Circo?
Go ahead.
Pollak Root has a question.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you. So have you, have you been in charge of a restaurant before? Is this something that you've done before and had success with, or?
The family actually had a very famous restaurant in the early 90s in downtown. It was a very similar concept. There are actually multiple media stories of them in those. I don't, I didn't have those media stories, but I think it was called King's Kebab, if I'm not mis... King's Kitchen, a very famous kebab house, and we plan on bringing back those recipes. His father is actually a gourmet shawarma chef from back home, and we plan on bringing those recipes back to life here.
Are some of those on this menu here, or is that something?
Yeah. This is our draft menu. We still gotta clean it up a little bit, but this is what we were able to come up with over the last few days on the different types of foods that we plan on selling.
My only concern, I mean, because looking at these sales, knowing what rents and things cost and what operating expenses are, this clearly needs to be kind of amped up to be a successful business.
Right.
And I appreciate that you're bringing it, but I'm just making sure that this, it would be something more dynamic in this, because then I don't know why'd you want to get in business in the first place here at the Palms.
We're very aware of the difficulties behind managing a restaurant, but we're also aware of the community gathering places that they support and that they serve as, you know. We have full intent to not only revamp the operations, but also spend significant amount of money on remodeling the Palms. I'm gonna bring up Ramon here in a minute. He handled, he's gonna be handling our remodel to talk about all the great ideas that we have here in a moment.
Okay, thank you.
I believe staff has, Noah has a comment to make. Yes, Noah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, based on the previous experience that the planning commission has had, I think it would be helpful if we could ask the speaker just to clarify the relationship between himself and the business operators. So the staff hasn't received any information about the sale of the business or who the new operators may be, so I think clarification as to whether or not the speaker is part of the ownership group, whether or not he would be there on a daily basis in conjunction with restaurant operations, or if that would be someone else and he's just representing them. So I think that might be helpful for the commission.
Right. And also, you know, you know about escrow. I've known a lot of escrows that have not closed, that something came up and did not close. So it does happen. You cannot put your 100% trust on the escrow being closed, it's still open, so just wanted to make sure of that. Any other questions before we call the next speaker?
I was just going to ask, we know you're representing the owners. Are the owners going to be on site on a daily basis? Are you going to be on site on a daily basis? What's your relationship with the new owners, assuming the escrow does close?
I represent the ownership group before public hearing bodies, but I'm actively involved with their various business operations, both as a community liaison and a government affairs liaison. I would also add that at least one member of the family will be on site every single day, seven days of the week. And that individual, who we plan on bringing in as our operating hand of the business, is very aware of the different requirements and criteria and conditions.
Good, because one of the, like Mr. Edison mentioned, each meeting we get a new face who's got a different relationship with the restaurant. So having some consistency would be very helpful, too.
One of the things that I had recommended is we're willing to accept a condition that says show up every six months, or three months, or every month if you'd like, and I'm happy to come in and demonstrate the sales receipts and the different menus and give you guys an update on what's happening at the Palms.
And is David Malikiar still the property owner? Or did you buy the property as well?
We have not purchased the property, but I believe David will remain as the ownership group.
You're assuming the lease?
Yes, we're assuming the lease, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, sorry if I may interject. I did speak with David Malikiar, the property owner, today, and he confirmed receipt of the public hearing notice, and it's my understanding that he remains the property owner.
He'll remain the property owner, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Rose?
Is the owner here today?
The prospective business owners?
Yes.
Yes, they're here today.
Okay, great. Did they fill out speaker cards?
Yes, they filled out speaker cards.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Laura, do we have another speaker card?
Yes, Jeff Mansour.
Please spell your last name.
Good evening. Mansour, M-A-N-S-O-U-R.
And you're Ramon or Jeff?
I'm Ramon.
Ramon, okay.
We're brothers.
Oh, Ramon.
Ramon.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so maybe a little background. We appreciate your, your time and of course, your effort, and we understand your frustration in the past. We'll give you a little insight of what we're planning, hopefully, on doing. So our family, well, my dad back home had a restaurant back in Iraq, we're Caldean, Catholics from Baghdad, and we owned and operated a restaurant called King's Shish Kebab on Sixth and F in downtown from about 1997 to about 2001. And so we have that Middle Eastern food history, and actually, if you, any of you aware or know a restaurant called Crafted Greens here in El Cajon, so a very, very popular restaurant. It was, it's my father-in-law's restaurant. I helped to design that restaurant. I named that restaurant. I headed all the marketing on how to implement a, it used to be a Starbucks that, that, you know, that relocated and shut down, and we took over that lease. And it took about, about a year and a half of build-out and all this, and I think we really built something special. It's really popular. It's been on the Yelp's top 100 twice, and we've only had it for about seven years. So we have really, we have the experience, and we are the new owners. I understand, of course, it takes a little time to take over, but yes, we have plans with this special kind of property. You understand it's a big place, and it's not a traditional restaurant, so it wouldn't succeed as just a regular restaurant if it was, if you put Crafted Greens in a 7,000-square-foot hall, it just wouldn't work, right? It doesn't make any, it doesn't make sense. But we saw the need, especially in this community, especially in the downtown El Cajon. It's essential, you know, for a lot of people, and it just needs a new vision, better operators, focused, with some history. And so, of course, Middle Eastern food is our, is what we know best, even though we've succeeded with American food, as you know, from Crafted Greens. But this particular style, with us implementing, I mean, we're, not only we spent significant amount to buy the business, and any business is a risk, of course, but we're also estimated somewhere around $300,000 that we're going, we're investing in, in a rebuild of the interior, the kitchen, the exterior signage. Of course, we have a game plan, we're ready to implement, and we're planning on implementing. To be honest with you, I didn't know the details of, of all the sore, you know, the bad things that maybe the previous operators put you guys through, but we have a really good, you know, confidence that, that if we operate the way we want to operate with the conditional use that it has, that this place is gonna be somewhere, something special. And, you know, even Crafted Greens, now it's like a little over half of the business now was all Uber Eats and DoorDash, and it's out of our control. This is just the times we live in. And so with the menu you're seeing, we'll be having, we'll be offering the DoorDashes and things like that to help a little bit offset some of these costs, you know, it's a, it's a big place. But, you know, with, with the alcohol, with the semi-use of the, as a, as a restaurant and as a banquet hall, with offering a very unique experience for a lot of our, you know, the people that live in this area...
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah. The people that live in this area, that, something that they've experienced back home. And so it's, it's the social aspect as well as the food, the alcohol, you know, that's why the gaming, all this kind of is, is part of the, making this thing work.
Okay.
If I'll answer any questions, yeah.
Commissioner Edison, go ahead.
You, maybe you misspoke, maybe I misheard. You said you weren't aware of what was going on?
I wasn't aware of all the details. I wasn't sure of how, the relationship between you guys and the previous owners and, and the frustration that you had. I wasn't aware of all the details of that.
Well, let me just ask you directly, were you aware of the possible revoke of the CUP?
I'm sorry?
Were you aware of the possible...
Well, we definitely had...
Were you aware of it?
Yeah, I mean, we were, we were somewhat aware of, of that, of a possibility.
And they didn't tell you why?
But I wasn't really sure of, that, that necessarily that, you know, that, that they didn't comply with some of the things you guys requested.
So I guess my, my...
And so we figured we would easily comply with those things, yeah.
Well, I, I like the energy. I'm just gonna be blunt, I like the energy, and opening up, being willing to put money into a business is a risk, and I also appreciate that. The concern I have is that you're saying you weren't aware of what was going on, you weren't aware of the, the CUP issues, yet you're gonna bring a different approach, but you weren't aware of...
No, I'll clarify.
I guess I'm confused.
What I said, I wasn't aware just how bad maybe the frustration that you and them had, wasn't that, that I wasn't aware of a potential that the CUP may be revoked. But like I said, we have confidence in our game plan, and the fact that they just couldn't comply with very simple things goes to show what kind of operators they were, and within just about a week or so, we're easily able to comply, you know, to comply, and I think we'll surpass you guys' expectations of what this place is gonna be.
My last question is for staff. Have they, have you had a pretty good dialogue and communication with the possible new ownership? Have they been open with communication with you?
No, I have not been contacted by the new ownership group. This is the first presentation that I've received. So the only correspondence that I've had was with the previous attorney at last week when I indicated that I needed additional information to prepare for this hearing, and, no additional information was received until now.
And you see, that's the thing, it's, even within, that's more of the same. My request is that we would communicate with staff, because a lot of the issues could have been addressed if it opened, good dialogue and communication with staff, and it's now the planning commission meeting, and there's been no communication with staff. That's concerning for me because I don't see a difference.
Yeah, I get it, it's, oh.
Commissioner Rose?
So you just took this thing over on the 26th?
Yes.
Correct? Let's see, what day, was that last Wednesday, Tuesday, something like that? So, did, and I hear what you're saying, the other owners didn't really tell you maybe the depth?
Correct.
Of what was going on? So they just came in and said, "Hey, we're looking to get out of this thing. Here's what you need to do, kind of good luck." So did you have, obviously, you're just trying to, you know, do what you can in four or five days before the hearing. My question is, what are your intentions as far as moving forward? Are you looking to go to the city to, you know, to show building plans and to revamp it and to remodel it?
Well, we can, of course, we can absolutely show what, what the plans and designs are gonna look like. You can see kind of what the new look is with the, with the draft of the menu you're seeing, new logo, new look, full selection in terms of food options. And if the request, if there's a request for us to share what the interior is gonna look like, absolutely, we can provide those, but, you know, it's gonna look very, very nice, and it's, and we're investing a lot of money into this thing and making it, you know, it's beautiful, and hopefully, like, you know, we have multiple businesses in El Cajon. I went to Grossmont High School, graduated San Diego State, our whole family grew up here, and, and we love investing here in El Cajon, this is, this is our home. And, and we have the track record, we've been in business here for about 30-plus years in El Cajon, besides, you know, the one, the one in downtown. So I mean, you're dealing with a solid group. I can't speak for the previous guys, I, you know, I can't speak for what they've done, but in one week, you've seen action, and, and yes, we're taking over, and, and we have taken over, and, and we have great plans for this place.
Commissioner Pollak Root, yes?
So since you just went to escrow the 26th, how long is this escrow, is it, how long is this escrow gonna be on this one? Like, you have a 45, 60, 90-day escrow, like how long?
I think, I think really short. I'm assuming less than a month?
About two to three months.
We have a 60-day plus 30.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
If I may approach the podium once again?
Yes, may.
Okay, we have a 60-day plus 30-day close.
Okay.
So 60-day due diligence, which is why we're here, plus 30-day close. I do want to clarify one thing, Commissioner Sotila, that staff was notified on March 24th, Noah specifically, saying, "Hi Noah, I want to give you a heads up that Palms is being sold, and I represent the new ownership group with additional information." He responded saying, "Here is the CUP for you to come, I've attached the agenda report, here is a link to the February 4th planning commission agenda." We notified staff, and I'm happy to forward that to the city manager as well as the commission for further review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may just clarify one more time, what I said was I wasn't informed of the new ownership group. So I did receive the email from Mr. Catula, as he indicated, but I haven't been given any additional information about who the operators are, what the ownership group entails.
Right, right, okay. So in 30 days, it's supposed to be closing? A 30-day escrow?
No, no, it's 60.
60 plus... Oh, not in 90 days?
60-day due diligence?
Yeah.
90-day close?
Yeah.
90-day close, okay, thank you very much.
The commercials usually take a little longer.
But in the meantime, you guys are running the operation. You're collecting the money, you're paying the bills, you're paying the lease.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Well, do we have another speaker card?
Yes, Jeff Mansour.
Hello, everybody. This is Jeff Mansour, M-A-N-S-O-U-R. So the same thing as Vince said and my brother said, our goal is to take over this business. Our goal is to make it thrive, and I understand everybody's position, I understand everybody's goal. Our goal is the same as your goal. We love the city of El Cajon, and same thing like my brother. I grew up here all my life, I, I live in El Cajon, I went to school in El Cajon, and most of my life, I lived here, and we are willing to invest in El Cajon, and that's what we're doing. And this is gonna be a great opportunity, and I understand the vision of downtown, the vision of what you guys are trying to do in downtown El Cajon, which is to enhance it, to make it great, to make it a downtown look, and we are the right people to do that because we do have the experience. So we are not only, we would love to do that, but we're also putting our money into it. You guys want investors, here we are. We're the investors, and we're gonna do it. And then we need each other. We need your help, your blessings, to communicate with entrepreneurs like us so that we can achieve the same goal. You know, that is our position, and we mean that sincerely, and that's what we're gonna do. And, and like Vince said, we can come and check with us anytime you want, but the point is, this is a restaurant, but it's a unique restaurant, right? It's a 7,200-square-foot restaurant. It's not a, it's not Crafted Green, like my brother said. So how do you, how do you operate a restaurant with 72? You have to have some, sell food, this is what we do. You have to have, sell alcohol, is what we have, and we have a banquet hall. Well, what's a banquet hall? We do parties. You know, we have lineup, the old owners, as we do quinceañeras. We did ourselves, our family, did the New Year's party at Palms. So we, we know the history of Palms. We've used it before. We've done many tournaments, and, and I'm very, very part of the community, and I do a lot of events, and I've used the Palms many times in the past to do community events. So it's not gonna survive. I'm just letting you know right now, if you're thinking about just strictly 100% restaurant, 7,200 square foot... If you're thinking about just strictly 100% restaurant, 7,200 square foot of building, that's not gonna happen, right? Can't be solely a restaurant. You gotta have in the weekend, some parties. You gotta have like weddings. We've done weddings, New Year's parties. You wanna do your birthday parties. You wanna do any kind of party. That's what generates enough income to sustain it. Otherwise, it's gonna go bankrupt if you just do restaurant-only restaurant, you know? So we are willing to do it. It's open. Come eat, come drink. We have Monday nights. They do bingo nights. You're more than welcome to come. Gotta have a bar. They do, on the weekend, they reserve parties and so on and so forth. So we have the right plan. We're moving forward. We wanna work. And you wanna have, especially if you wanna call this downtown, you wanna have some music, right? It's downtown. You wanna have some music. You wanna have some parties. You wanna have some energy. That's what we wanna create in downtown El Cajon, and we're the right guys to do, and that's what we're here for. And we know these people. So I know you're thinking, oh, one week, we just popped up. It's, no, we've had dialogue with them. But, and we knew there was some tension between city and compliance. And we're here to address it, and we're here to fix it. It shouldn't be a problem, because we know what we're doing. And we're gonna move forward to accomplish our goal, which is to partner up with the city. We need to communicate, keep the places nice and clean. You guys keep the outside clean. The city keeps everything clean. It kinda helps out with the homeless.
Your time is up, Mr. Mansour. Can you wrap it up?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna say that we're gonna make this happen, and we want each other to partner up to achieve the same goal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pollock Root, please. Go ahead.
Just really quick. I know Noah's worked a lot with many of the other owners to try to keep everything in compliance. Now that you're gonna take over the Palms, are you gonna work with the city to kind of see what the compliance issues are to make sure that it stays on the right track?
Of course, yeah. I know Noah very well, and I've worked with him in the past. And we're gonna do everything we can to achieve the same goal. We know exactly what everybody wants, and we'll do our best, right, together to accomplish that goal. And that's a promise.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have any other speaker cards?
Yes, Kathy Zeeman.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Spell your last name for us, please, Kathy.
My name is Kathy Zeeman, Z-E-M-A-N. And I'm here to represent Downtown El Cajon Business Partners, who administers the Property-Based Improvement District for the City of El Cajon. I'm joined by Board Member Chris Berg, who holds a seat for the City of El Cajon Manager's Office on our board. And tonight, we respectfully, respectfully but firmly urge the commission to revoke the conditional use permit number 2115 for the Palms Restaurant and Banquet Hall. For over a year, the Palms has repeatedly failed to comply with its CUP requirements, specifically operating as a bona fide restaurant with public access from Main Street. Instead, the Palms consistently functions as a private card club and event space with the entrance at the rear, creating a vacant and unwelcoming facade on our prime Main Street location. This continued non-compliance directly undermines the mayor and the city council's goal of revitalizing downtown nightlife and attracting vibrant businesses. Despite numerous extensions and repeated leniency granted by this commission, including hearings in February of 2024, February of 2025, and again tonight, compliance has not been achieved. Instead, the owners have employed delay tactics, sending different representatives and legal counsel each time, and tonight claiming to transfer to new ownership, all to buy additional time without meaningful improvement. Additionally, the Palms continues to create nuisances for our community. We receive frequent complaints from neighboring businesses about improper waste disposal practices, specifically dumping trash in public areas rather than their designated dumpsters. This behavior burdens the Downtown El Cajon Business Partners' resources, as our contractors must regularly clean up after the Palms. The site currently occupied by the Palms holds enormous potential to positively impact our downtown area. To realize this potential, our organization recently hired Marco Lamandri of New City America as our new executive director. He is a nationally recognized expert who has successfully transformed business districts, such as San Diego's Little Italy and Chula Vista's Third Avenue. Additionally, Chris Berg from the city manager's office and Paris Landon from Live Nation now lead our hospitality task force actively recruiting reputable restaurant and nightlife tenants ready to invest in our downtown. Revoking the CUP is not only justified, it's necessary. Continuing to allow this establishment to operate out of compliance sets a dangerous precedent undermining our collective efforts to hold businesses accountable. Revocation will enable us to bring in a responsible, compliant operator who will truly enhance our community and support El Cajon's economic vitality. Commissioners, we urge you to take decisive action tonight and revoke the conditional use permit 2115, and help us reclaim downtown's potential. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Just a moment, please. Do you have any questions of Mr. Zeeman? Commissioner Circle?
Just one question.
Yes.
You mentioned that the purpose of revocation would be to bring in new operators who would be able to follow compliance.
Yes.
And tonight, we find out that we've got new operators wanting to come in and do compliance.
I'm not sure that that's just not a shuffling game as opposed to real change. You know, they've done this before where they're just coming in and they're telling you what you wanna hear. It's a 90-day escrow. I'm a real estate broker. I don't know if that's gonna close. I don't know that they're gonna make any real changes. They just said how hard it is to operate a 7,200-square-foot building as a restaurant. But I think we can find people that will come in and be able to operate as a restaurant, bar, music, create the vitality that we're looking for and that the city council is looking for in the downtown area.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speaker cards?
I have no other speaker cards.
I move to close public carry.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Sotila, second by Commissioner Morris. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay.
I've got some comments.
Yes.
A couple things. The downtown partnership, I know they've been around for a while. I haven't seen a whole lot of action in the last five or six years. There's a lot of vacancies. I noticed that when I get out of a concert, Gabe isn't even open at Downtown Cafe anymore. He's closed. He doesn't open till 2:00. He used to be open for lunch. He closes at 8:00 PM. So I'm really not sure what the vision is downtown currently. I do know that Jeff Mansour has run many businesses here. I know he's not the new, the old owners. So I just think right now, do I want a vacant building? I've got plenty of those. I don't know how long the bureaucrats are gonna take to get anything moving. I hope they do. And maybe, you know, some of these business owners can be part of it. But what I've seen the last four years is more vacancies, restrictive hours. I mean, I have no idea why the Downtown Cafe is not open till 10 o'clock on nights of concerts. You know, I have no idea why they closed for lunch. I didn't know that till I went there for lunch, and they're closed. I mean, they've been open for lunch forever, and now they're not. And so, I mean, at this point, I don't know what we have to lose by giving these guys a shot with the new ownership. I think we need to put some, some restrict, I mean, I don't think we need to audit a private business every month, but I think we need to look at maybe a 60-day review, maybe 120 days. You know, over the next six months, just give them a shot. I just don't know what else we're gonna do with the place. We can just board it up if we want to. You know, and have another, you know, empty place. But, you know, these guys are coming in. I've seen what Jeff has done in spending money with his cash and carry and taking over the vacant building, the Rite Aid building. Was that Rite Aid? And so, you know, they do put their money where their mouth is, so I think it might be worth giving them a shot. That's just my opinion.
Any other comment? Yes, Commissioner Edison?
My comment is, and I appreciate the energy, this is a new energy that I haven't seen. Unfortunately, I'm going based upon the last year. And that's what the CUP revocation is talking about, is what's been going on over the past year, not what's happened over the last week. Which, you know, it's, in fairness to you, a week, there's only so much you can do in a week. So I appreciate that. But I'm going based upon what I've seen, which is numerous representatives, different messages. It's been an arm and a leg to get staff communication, you know, consistently. So I'm just going by what I've seen, and I do agree with you. I don't wanna see another empty building. But at the same time, I'm having a hard, I'm having a hard time with this.
Yes, Commissioner Circle?
I would like to say that I like the vision the Mansours have. I like that they are talking about keeping it in line with what the city of El Cajon wants, bringing the music, the banquet hall, the restaurant, and making sure that it is vital on Main Street, not just in the south entrance, but in the north entrance. It is really rough timing to come in right when the revocation hearing is happening, because we have a year of reports, and now we've got one week of, I really like what you guys have done in one week, what we weren't able to get the previous operators to do in a year.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of good energy. They don't have full ownership. They've got operation going. I like the idea of changing the look of the Palms from this stucco facade of nothing to something vital. They came with one week with the menu. The previous operators couldn't get us a menu a couple months.
Like pulling teeth.
Yeah. So, like I said, the timing is the only awkward part. Like, we've got this whole movement, and we hadn't had movement. We got little bits here and little bits there, and we got different people. And it does feel, I'll agree with Kathy Zeeman, it does feel like this is just somebody else in front of us talking to us about how they're going to do stuff. I do appreciate that they didn't just talk about doing stuff. They've already done stuff. The palm trees are not cheap. The menu, getting the hostess booth out on the sidewalk, so it's inviting instead of having to go in to find the booth. I know that if we don't revoke the CUP, that staff can work with them on the issues with the divider, because I don't think that was exactly what we were picturing. But they did it. They shrunk down the space so that it's a restaurant. And I agree with everyone, everybody agrees that can't just be a restaurant. It's too big to just be a restaurant. It's gotta have other uses. And these guys have done other uses. So I'm always in favor of giving people a chance. I know you guys have seen that for the last year. And I've seen what these guys have done with other properties. I didn't know that they were the new owners until tonight, which kind of is like, okay, you've had a week. Hopefully, they'll get the communication with the city open and going. But, yeah, it's just the timing that's awkward. That's all.
Commissioner Pollock Root, what say you?
No, I appreciate what they have to say, and I'm sure he's worked with the city of El Cajon on other businesses. So I'm sure he has, you know, Noah knows of him. So I'm sure, you know, to see something new with the Palms would be great. I know it's, you know, a 90-day escrow, so nothing could really be done probably till things close. But I'm sure you have a vision that you could bring to the planning and see, you know, how it's gonna fit in to hope, to make it a vital part of El Cajon and not just what it is right now. And just to be compliant, because, you know, we do have a lot of venues and things downtown that we would like somewhere to go after and eat and drink and continue to enjoy each other's company. So I appreciate that you're coming in, but like everyone else says, it's not really a day late and a dollar short, but we're getting really close, because we didn't know that this was happening, so. But I appreciate everything you brought here, and I appreciate the liquors you put, asked for details. So, because with the revocation, there wouldn't be liquors. So, but I'm always big on, you know, giving someone a shot. And working in big clubs through my college career, I knew that a big space, you can't just have a restaurant, because it just wouldn't be vital. You have to have other things. So I could understand where you're coming from, from that as well, so.
Well, I did all everything that my fellow commissioners have stated. And I think in my mind, at this point in time, what is appropriate is a compromise. And what I mean by a compromise is that escrow is gonna close in approximately 90 days. That we move this meeting until the close of escrow and make the final decision at that point in time. We've moved it for a whole year now. What's another 90 days? So it gives an opportunity for the new owners to prove to us that they're serious in doing what they want to do. At the same time, we don't have an empty building. At the same time, who knows? Miracles do happen. So I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel about that, moving, yes, Commissioner Morris, yes?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, if I may just interject quickly on the compromise suggestion. In conjunction with your discussions, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that I heard in the testimony. The, you know, I heard, I heard more private events. I heard a request to increase the number of private events on a percentage-wise from 15% up to potentially 30%. And I heard some pushback from the applicant's representative about the authority for the Planning Commission to enforce those requirements. I also heard more weddings, more birthday parties, more weekend parties, as well as the addition of the interior wall that was not reviewed by staff. So one of the concerns that I have moving forward is, you know, we'll start with the partition wall. If the partition wall moves closer to the front, and we end up with a situation where maybe you have, you know, four or six tables across the front that aren't being utilized, but then kind of more of a private facility in the back that's, you know, maybe operated more like a bar. But that's a concern that I have, where I don't have the actual condition of approval about where that wall goes and how much of the business needs to be a restaurant and how much needs to be set aside for private activities or other uses. I also have the concern about the increase from 15% to 30% for the ancillary banquet use. In my mind, all of those things would require an amendment to the conditional use permit. And I think one of the things that the commission has struggled with is that we're, we've been trying, as new operators are coming in, trying to apply these old conditions of approval. So I think if there's a desire to work with this operator, I think what I would suggest is that the commission, at a minimum, direct the operator to give a full business plan, floor plan, improvement drawings. I would suggest even directing them to submit an amendment to the conditional use permit, so that we can look at that percentage of banquet use if they want to propose to increase that, so that staff can analyze that. I think the problem that we're having here is that the purpose of this hearing isn't to renegotiate the conditions of approval associated with the conditional use permit. We know it's been operated not in compliance with those conditions. So we don't want to give guidance to the applicant on how to change those. I think we need to ask them to come forward, have a new business plan, submit an amendment to the conditional use permit, and then in 90 days, if they submit that, we can bring that back, you know, with the revocation hearing at the same time.
So you say an amendment, an amendment to the existing CUP? Or an amended, the new CUP?
It would just be, it would be essentially an amendment to the existing conditional use permit. I mean, the alternative also could be to just go ahead and revoke the existing conditional use permit, direct the applicant to submit for a new CUP. You know, if I had an application that was submitted next week, we could have that back to the Planning Commission in 60 to 90 days without a problem at all.
Right. So which is more difficult, the amendment or doing a completely new CUP?
They're both equally simple, and staff is happy and excited to assist the new operator with those. I think what we're only trying to achieve here is a clear understanding of the expectations for the business. So, you know, when somebody walks down the street and they look inside the business, you know, how much of that is expected to be operated as a restaurant if they're putting a wall in the middle? You know, what does that look like? If they want to, we've heard a lot about increasing, you know, banquets and private parties. I don't wanna be in a situation where staff is, you know, going back and forth, asking them for schedules, and again, trying to say, you know, what days are you having parties? When's it a restaurant? I mean, those are a lot of the issues that came up in the comment letter from the El Cajon. in the comment letter from the Alcon business partners was that it's not operating as a restaurant. We're having so many private parties where maybe the curtains are up or there's a wall up and they don't want anyone to see on the inside. So from staff's perspective, I think that it would be most beneficial to have some sort of amendment to the conditional use permit so we all have fair expectations about how the business will operate without having to guess.
So how will we word this evening, an amendment? How would that be done?
I think my suggestion would be to reopen the public hearing, ask the applicant and the applicant's representative if they're willing to submit an amendment to the conditional use permit. If they're willing to do so, then we could process that and then bring back the revocation and the conditional use permit amendment at the same time.
Okay.
Commissioner Sotile.
Pardon me?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner Rose.
So I like, I like the idea of a continuance so that they can continue to generate revenue while they're working on it. And I wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be a plan. If we're going to give them 90 days, that's plenty of time to come up with a business plan, including drawing, I mean, I know you can't go as far as maybe new architectural drawings on maybe an interior work that they want to do, but just something that really states in writing their plan. Like you said, how much space are they going to keep? You know, what I'd love to see is them put, build a bar in the front of the restaurant, right? Where you could have guys sit down and watch sports games, you know? And then when they want to do a banquet, obviously, they can move the divider, but now they got a bar sitting right there. I mean, there's a lot they can do. I think an amendment to the CUP makes the most sense, in my opinion, just because it'll allow them to continue to generate revenue, which they're going to need to make these improvements. But I think that they need to come up with a clear and solid business plan and bring that back to us within 90 days and work with the staff on that. You know, if they don't like the way the certain things are written with the CUP or they need to change things for the sake of having it in writing, like Noah was saying, then let's get it, let's get it in writing. Let's just not willy-nilly do a 90-day for the sake of doing it for like an inspection or something. Let's, let's make it solid.
That's right. Yes, Commissioner Edison?
If we were to do, if we were to revoke the CUP, how quick can they start on the new CUP? And how much will this affect their escrow?
The new CUP could be processed in a very short timeline. It would just be the applicant and the applicant's representative providing us the necessary information as far as a floor plan and a project description. You know, it would not be a heavy lift to get it back to the Planning Commission in 45 to 60 days if we were to get an application in the next week.
Just seems to me that this isn't work, this, the CUP that we have currently, we can amend it and we might have to amend it again. It just almost seems like a fresh start. And it's not a slam on you guys because the energy is there. It's just the history is also there, and that's what I'm struggling with.
Commissioner Circo, yes?
Oh, I like what Noah said, and this helped me out a lot because we're working on this on all the old metrics. Like, that's what Mr. Edison and I are carrying is for a year, for 10 years, we've had a business that hasn't quite made it to what we were expecting them to do. And it's not really fair to apply the same metric to the new owners. So I like your suggestion of having them work with you on an amendment to the CUP so that we know what they want. And then we can look at, okay, does that fit with what we want? And I like the idea of 90 days. Once the escrow is closed, that will give staff time to see they're doing what they want, they're doing what we want them to do. And then they can provide us with the option of a new amendment to the CUP so that the business in practice matches what the business in writing is supposed to be.
Commissioner Pollock Root, yes?
Just really quick, I think the revocation would be a little hasty because they're currently operating and they do have alcohol sales. So it wouldn't really be fruitful to them taking over if we did revoke it. Not saying that I want the same old, same old that has been going on forever. I'm just trying to be respectful to trying to make this work for everybody, trying to create a vibrant downtown Alcoa. But I think the importance of, and when you purchase any business or take any business over, you want to work with downtown. We want to know what's going on because we have, we've been trying for a long time to make this work for the city of Alcoa and for the people who reside there. So I think in knowing how the separation is going to be, how it's going to work, what can, what your envision is of the place. Because if you want to purchase this place, I'm sure you want to make sure that it works and we're not back here in 90 days. You wasted all this time and effort and money for nothing. So I think the biggest thing with us, we just want to make sure that you're working with, you know, the planning department just to kind of see what the envision is. Because to be successful, you got to have everyone work together on this so you can be successful and not have to have us, you know, and take staff's hours away, you know, checking to see if the menu there, how much wall there. So I think we just want to, you know, make this successful for everybody. So that, that's my two cents.
All right, my question is, Noah?
Yes.
You heard all that, right?
Yes.
I agree with it. I agree with 90 days when the escrow is closed. How do we word all that?
I think what I would first suggest is, I know we've had a lot of discussion, but I think we're asking the applicant to do a lot and the applicant's representative. So if we could maybe reopen the public hearing as the applicant to approach the microphone and see if they're willing to entertain that compromise.
Good. Let's open a public hearing. I move to open a public hearing.
I don't think we need to.
You just need to.
Okay.
You just need to reopen the public.
So is it Mr. Catula, Mr. Mansour, Renor, or is it Jeff? Which one? Okay, very good, Mr. Catula.
I drew the short straw. Okay, a couple of things. If you revoke the CUP, we're not, we're not buying it. Make it very clear. And then you got to shut down vacant building. And good luck trying to fill it, a 7,200 square foot vacant building. Number two, we need a new amended CUP. We're going to have new floor plans, we're going to have a new layout. We're going to have new mechanical, electrical, and plumbing that's going to go into this building. We're pumping in over a quarter million dollars. So you're going to need new plans to be reflective. 90 days, I would love to get a CUP approved within 90 days or presented before the Planning Commission within 90 days. That's music to my ears. So I accept, we accept the compromise of 90 days. I guess we would just.
You want to amend the CUP, though?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would continue this hearing for 90 days. During that time, we'll be working with staff on an amendment to the CUP, which demonstrates the up to 30% of banquet and private, public parties, private parties, whatever it may be, updated restaurant layout, and we go from there.
What if it's somewhere in between, between 30% and 15%? Would you compromise as well?
30 to 50?
Yeah, you said currently 15%. And I say somewhere between 30 and 15.
Look, the whole idea behind this downtown vision is to bring liveliness and bring action and bring music and do all these great things to attract visitors and spenders and guests and generate sales tax and create something like a Little Italy. The more restrictive you are on this business, the further away you're going to get from achieving that goal. You want to give us 15%? That's fine. But how does that coincide with what the downtown partnership is trying to do? Yes?
It's, it's not so much. I think the biggest thing is just having that conversation and presenting us with something and then we can understand what your vision is. But, so I think right now, it is 15%. You would like 30, but I'm sure they will present something as to why or what that will look like. And then at that point, we can kind of decipher, is that too much? Is that too little? And kind of go for there, from there. But I, we don't have anything solid in front of us to see what that's actually going to look like.
Yeah.
So I think it's kind of vague to make that.
Understood. And there's other intricates of the business that you guys need to review as well. It's not just the banquets.
Correct.
It's a whole bunch of.
It's the floor plan, it's the set out, it's everything.
It's a willingness of having an open discussion.
Right.
With the city.
Right.
And the staff. Well, eventually, but the staff primarily. They're the most important people here, is the staff. So how do we word that?
Any other questions?
No.
Should we close public hearing first?
That's true. Any other speakers on this? No, okay. Let's close public hearing.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Rose, seconded by Commissioner Circo. Please vote.
I'm still missing a couple, Edison and Pollock Root. There we go. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
So I think staff's recommendation, based on the discussion, would be to continue this public hearing for approximately 90 days with the, and then direct the applicant to privately initiate their own amendment to the conditional use permit for the Planning Commission's evaluation.
That's my motion.
I'll give it a go.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue public hearing for 90 days. And in that 90 days, we recommend that the applicant present staff with a plan to amend the CUP as per their discussion.
Okay, I second it. Please vote. Motion made by Commissioner Rose, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Please vote.
And motion carries by unanimous vote.
Congratulations.
All right, we're all coming in for dinner soon. Would you like your receipts back and your menus?
Yeah.
Maybe hand them over to the side there.
Mr. Chairman, can staff please request just a short three to five-minute recess?
Okay. I move that we have a short recess for about five minutes.
Okay.
Seconded, voted?
No, I still want to vote on it.
Recession.
Meeting to order. Agenda item number five is Carol's Community Care Review of CUP Number 185 and 631. Sequa, no subject for sequas. Staff recommendation is direct staff to schedule a public hearing to initiate amendment of CUP 118 and 631, or to consider revocation if the use is being operated in a manner not compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is not a public hearing, this is just a review item on a conditional use permit. So similar to the process that we started with the Palms, we came forward, asked the planning commission to take a look at the conditional use permit and then determine whether or not we need to move forward to an amendment or revocation hearing. So if you remember, Carol's Community Care was before the planning commission for a review about a year ago. The address is 523 Emerald Avenue, and as the chair stated, there are actually two conditional use permits that govern the property. Those were both approved in the 1960s with a few amendments, and then in the 1970s. And then in conjunction with this, I also want to emphasize that the reason that we're here, it's not about housing, and it's really only related to the management and operations of the facility. There's fair housing laws that govern housing, and so we understand and respect those. We're just solely looking at the operation of the facility. So just an image for context, again, 523 Emerald Avenue, this picture is looking to the east. You have, excuse me, to the east, and you have West Lexington on the north, and then Chamberlain is just to the south. So this really began back in 2023 when staff observed an increase in calls for service at the facility. Again, it was October, or April 16th of 2024 when the planning commission conducted a review of the facility. After receiving testimony from the operator, the planning commission determined that we did not need to schedule a public hearing. The operator provided assurances that they would work with staff to address the problems that were occurring. Over the past year, staff has met with the operator every few months, but the calls for service have remained high. The meetings that we had with the operator included a wide range of representatives. We had representatives from the police department, from Heartland Fire, from code compliance, as well as the building officials. So we tried to make sure that we were, it wasn't just staff and code compliance talking about the conditional use permit, we were trying to make sure that we approached this comprehensively. So the agenda report includes complaints that have been filed with the state, and many of the complaints are similar to the experiences that the city has been experiencing. So issues like management not being present, unauthorized individuals on the property, cockroaches, mold complaints, and then also noise complaints. It's staff's opinion that really that these calls for service could be reduced or eliminated with management that's really more effective, has better operational programming, and with some minor physical enhancements to the property. Additionally, after more research, staff did identify that state licensing authorizes 70 beds at the facility, while the city approvals reflect 58 beds. So overall, what we're seeing here is also a need to update the conditional use permit in order to bring it to be consistent with the number of beds that are out there, and then to look at whether or not new operational conditions of approval need to be added. The planning commission can privately, or the planning commission can initiate an amendment to the conditional use permits on your own and apply new conditions. Really, the primary issue is that the approvals from the 1960s and 70s just say that the use shall be operated in a compatible fashion with surrounding properties. In staff's opinion, what we need to do is really look at and explore with the applicant what operational improvements and enhancements they can implement, you know, like guest passes for people that are coming on the property, or, you know, implementing new fencing, just other operational enhancements. So we do have a representative from the police department here, that's Lieutenant Thornton. He has been a firsthand experience of being at the property and experiencing the comments that are coming from the police department, so I'd like to invite him down now just to give some information to the planning commission. Thank you.
For El Cajon PD, I am the District One Watch Commander. As a watch commander, I oversee patrol, and I'm also responsible for District One, so I analyze call volume, crime trends on District One, and complaints, and try and find ways to address them from the law enforcement perspective. As you're aware, District One is the west side of the city, and it does include Carol's at 523 Emerald. The two primary concerns that we've had have been the increased call volume and the lack of management onsite during our response. For the call volume, I get a monthly report from our crime analyst, which lists the top five locations within District One. Carol's is chronically at number one or number two for response. To put that in perspective, the mall is also District One. The buildings on the east side, such as Best Buy and Home Goods, have their own addresses. Dick's and JCPenney have their own addresses. Everything else, all the other stores on the inside, all of the kiosks, the theater, the food court, in our system are all listed as their own address, and we respond to all of those stores combined roughly the same as we respond to Carol's on Emerald. For our service when we do show up, the biggest issue we found is lack of management onsite. That impacts our ability to do our job, specifically with mental health evaluations. When we speak with clients and if they deny having made any statements or deny any actions, we need a credible third party per the California Welfare and Institutions Code, and usually that staff at other facilities. When our officers respond, staff is either not answering phone calls, not present, or not able to provide any information for us, including face sheets to our PERT team, and so we're not able to take effective action. In totality, what it does is it limits our response to other events in the city because we spend more time at this property for call volume or for inefficiency, and we can't respond to other areas or conduct other proactive enforcement. And that's how it's impacted our police response.
So Lieutenant Thornton, what recommendations do you have to make the property more secure?
What I've seen in other properties that seems to be more effective is having a 24/7 onsite manager, someone that we can contact. We've seen that at a couple of our ILFs that have as few as four people living inside of them. They also have management onsite that helps. The gate is huge, having the property sealed off, so that people can check in or check out, having systems in place like that. Improved lighting and other general conditions that NOAA has received recommendations about seem to be the things that make the most impact.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add as well, sorry, the, we also want to work with the Department of Social Services and the County of San Diego and all representatives that are affiliated with the operation of the business in order to make sure that any operational conditions are consistent with, you know, state law and other regulations. So the purpose here tonight, again, isn't to look at getting a new set of conditions of approval, it's really just to get that direction from the commission to ask staff to come back and look and propose some things. So I think we'll receive testimony from the operators about some of those rules and regulations, but what I want to emphasize is that we want to work with social services and the other stakeholders, and then come back to the commission again with a full package for your evaluation, rather than trying to piecemeal our evaluation this evening.
I see, okay. Are the owners here this evening?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Edison.
In responses to your calls for service, how much of that is bleed out from the surrounding community? And if it is directly the result of the community, in general terms, what kind of calls for service are you getting?
Both good questions. I don't have the exact numbers with me. When I did run a report that covered a year timeframe from April to April, there was roughly 200 calls for service, and I believe six of them were transient-related, meaning they had no nexus at all to the property. The other 194 were directly related to the property. We've had a wide variety of calls, some different felony crimes, some violent crimes have happened there. Mostly, it's mental health evaluations and disturbances that we respond to, though.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I can add to that as well. We did a deep dive into calls for service over the past 90 days, sort of December through February. Over that time, there was a total of 47 calls for service. Of the total, 22 were from Carol's residents, 12 were from Carol's staff, five from Grossmont Hospital, one from Adult Protective Services, and one from Social Services, and one identified as a mental health clinician.
Fellow Commissioner, any questions for Lieutenant here?
No, I think, just, I think a gate's important. I think a lot about like ECTLC, you know? They've got more beds, obviously, but they have a lot of controls, you know? They've got gates, they've got people on staff, management, they've got security. So I think it sounds like that's, that would be some of the solutions that we need to look into.
So, Mr. Chairman, I do know the applicant, or I'm sorry, the operator is present in the audience. It's not a public hearing, but I think, just again, to reiterate, staff's recommendation is just for the commission to direct staff to schedule a public hearing so that we can look at how we can improve this conditional use permit.
Before Lieutenant Thornton goes away, any other questions for Lieutenant Thornton? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. Is the property owner here? Could you please come forward? Or the business owner, whichever the case may be?
Both, no.
Okay.
My name is Don Myers, I'm the owner and operator of Carol's Community Care in El Cajon, I've been doing it for, since 1986, 40-something years. So, anyway, like...
You heard some of the issues that were presented here, what say you regarding those issues?
Well, the issue where I was here before was for us to cooperate with NOAA and his recommendations, and he gave us recommendations on what to do and how to do it, and that's what we've been doing. We've brought in more staff, we've upgraded the facility, we're in a grant with the city right now, trying to up, give it a facelift, make it, you know, livable and worthy of the neighborhood. So what the picture you saw today will not be what it is before. We've built a gate, we put the fences up, we've hired staff, you know, that can take care of the vagrancies. We've eliminated majority of the homelessness that we had because of building the fence and putting the gates and getting different people to work there. So the calls that he is referring to are diminishing repeatedly. So I don't agree with his findings. He is, they gave mentally ill residents telephones, and the only phone number they know how to use is 911. When they have a problem, they call 911. Like, my records from the last two months, we've called the fire, we've called the police department, I think, two times. Those were for a person that was infiltrating our facility, trying to sell drugs and bothering our clients. My clients, he actually has a restraining order against him too, which nobody came out to do anything about. So we handled it on our own. One of my other residents basically knocked him out after the third time he came back and was harassing everybody. We don't know if he was arrested or not, because the police told us, if he comes back, give us a call, we'll check it out. Never did. So these are, this is why I disagree. My residents run around calling 911. Those people have been evicted, they've been moved out. I've kicked out 86 people since the beginning of 2024, and those people, most of them are violators of calling 911, drug addicts, people that just don't get along, aggressiveness causing issues and problems. They're gone. The last one was just on March 15th, he started getting excited, amped, he's calling 911, he's gone. The calls from other places that, I mean, that's been taken care of. I don't see where he's coming with, you know, these other calls. So, you know, that's something that we've addressed.
Commissioner Edison has a question for you?
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, I want to tell you, you're doing the Lord's work, so it's a tough job, what you're doing. I mean, it's not easy, and if there was, if it was easy, there'd be 100 places, and you wouldn't be standing before us. And I just want to reiterate what Noah was saying, this was to schedule a public hearing, this isn't necessarily to shut you down, this is maybe to figure out some ways, better ways to solve some problems. So I don't want you to take it in the sense that...
No, we're doing, we, I've, there's some people here with, through the county and different places that would like to address it.
I just wanted to, I guess my final point, I don't think you should look at this necessarily as a bad thing, I think it's as an opportunity to get some feedback from staff and the city, and maybe come up with some solutions, because you're right, mentally ill, you know, they're going to do what they do. But the drain on, you know, public safety is real, so perhaps some changes can be found that we haven't thought about yet. I think that's really what this is about, I think what Noah was saying, is just to do some amendments, so...
Mr. Alvy gave us different recommendations, and we've complied with every single one of them, except for the fact of doing things that we're not legally allowed to do. We cannot lock a gate and allow, and not allow these people to come and go as they please.
And I think that was one of the other things that he was mentioning too, is to stay within the state law, you know, Health and Human Services, they have a lot of restrictions there. You're right, and I've dealt with this line of work, you're 100% right, it's touchy and it's tricky, especially given different regulations. I think what the city and staff are trying to do is come up with some alternatives to lower the drain on public safety resources and services, and maybe find some ideas that we haven't done. So I don't think that this is necessarily a bad thing.
No, I agree, I mean, we are doing everything we possibly can do to do it. We are cooperating with him, we are cooperating with everything. In fact, we are, we've put together a big packet of things that we're doing. I tried to hand them to him at our last meeting, he had no, didn't want to even look at it. I showed him what, the contracts that we were signing, I tried to give it to him, he didn't want anything to look at, he didn't care. He doesn't, he, all he wants to do is harass and shut me down, and I'm not here to do that, but that's exactly what he's doing. I have personally tried to talk to him, worked with him, he will not work with me, he just wants to, he just keeps throwing new issues at me and new things. It's, you know, and it's like, I have no idea what his agenda is, I have some ideas, but I'll keep them to myself.
I'll just push back a little bit on that, only because from what I'm seeing and hearing is that this is giving you a chance to have that due process, to have your say, if there's some requests that you feel are unreasonable, that's part of the due process of this, and we can work with that.
Right, a request is a request, and everything that we could possibly do, we are doing. We've, like I said, we've hired new people, we've eliminated people, we've gotten, you know, we've gotten rid of the problematic people, we're trying to, we're upgrading, we're putting, the County of San Diego is giving us a grant of over a million dollars to upgrade the facility and its appearance, and to make a better place for everybody. They're putting in electric gates, we're putting in lighting, but, and then we're also good, we put in cameras, we built fences, we put in trees to make it look nice. They were stolen by the homeless people, but, you know, that's what we're dealing with.
Electronic gate, that means that you have a card, electronic card that you swipe to open the door?
We have, we're going to put in a gate closure, we can't put in an electronic gate. These people have a disability, and in order to come and go, they have to be able to open and close the door without any devices.
Like, I would say, well, like a hotel motel card?
They can't even use a key on their doorknob without losing it, and they'll break my windows to get back into their rooms. These are, this is...
They can break a window, but they can't turn a key or swipe a card?
They can't remember where the key is.
That's a problem. And you still have 70 beds instead of 58?
I have 70, we've had 70 since 1974. I took over the facility in 1986 as a 70-bed board and care licensed by the state of California, and I applied for that license in February of 1986 as a 70-bed board and care, and that's what we were given. And there was a conditional use permit that stated that.
Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just if I could just clarify just a couple of things?
Yes.
I just want to make it clear that staff has never asked the operator to evict anyone. This isn't about the tenants or the people that are there, so we've never said that. In the interactions that we have had with the operator, they did show me information about the grant application. It was my understanding they'd be coming in for building permits, so I didn't need a copy of that information. And again, just to clarify, that the grant is, it was stated it was with the city, the grant is not with the city, it's with an outside agency.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Yes, we have several speaker cards, and the next one I have is Brian Myers.
Well, hello. My name is Brian Myers, I'm Don's son, never done this before.
How you spell your last name?
M-E-Y-E-R-S.
Thank you.
So I've been around this my entire life. Love mental illness, love helping people. I've been doing this for 30 years. I am the operations under my dad. I have a great rapport with the state, a great rapport with the county, I also want to have a great rapport with you guys. We are doing everything in our power to work with the city on the public resources and the problems that we're running into. Like my dad said, the problems within are residents with cell phones. We are following state law, no, you did not ask to evict people, we're trying to come up with solutions to relocate people that are, you know, overusing the public resources for no reason. That's a solution, not a, I want to just evict everybody. So, in my eyes, I mean, we're doing everything in our power. Like he said, we're giving the whole place a facelift, restructuring everything, zero tolerance, and that's for the city, you know, so, I'm nervous.
You're doing great.
Yeah. As far as everything goes, we just want answers to these requ, or the, what do you call it, the, the, what do you call it? To his suggestions, I guess. There's just a lot of conflicting stuff that we're getting from the city, so it's like, you know, you need lighting, we put up lighting, we're new roof, we're doing that, new windows, doors, cleaning up the property. They requested that we do a security guy. We have a guy at night that, you know, helps with deflecting the people from the streets. The security guard, I would ask, there's no solution to it. What is a security guard supposed to do? Call 911. So they're going to be calling 911. I asked them, what's the difference between them calling 911 versus us calling 911? No response. them calling 911 versus us calling 911? No response. There's no answer. There's no solution to work with them. So that's kind of my issue when working with the city is we're getting a lot of requests from them, but there's no answers to how that's going to give a solution to the problem. So that's kind of where we're in this fuzzy area of frustration. It's like, what do we do? You know? When we evict someone for psychiatric issues, we give them a 30-day notice. Nobody around town, other cities, are going to take this person because there's an issue. What's our answer? What do we do? There is nothing we can do. We have to wait until someone will accept them somewhere else. So in that whole 60, 90 days, 120 days, excuse me, we're stuck with having to call 911 for these things because there's no answers. There's no, there's no solution to where to put this person. There's just, like I said, there's a whole long list of, everything's contradicting itself and it all comes down to us.
Also, there's a plethora of, of complaints from, to the Department of Social Services. There's quite a few of them. What do you attribute those to?
People are allowed to make complaints. They're also unsubstantiated. I mean, they're unfounded. So...
Some, some are founded. There was a few that were.
Well, I mean, I'm sure, I'd have to see which ones they were or what the situation, what we did about it, all that stuff. But I do have a really good, close relationship with the state of California licensing. If there's an issue, we resolve it. If, but 90% of the stuff that comes through, 99% of the stuff that comes through is unfounded, you know. So people, they do make complaints on everything, you know, roaches. Look at the clients we're dealing with.
And five of them were from Grossmont Hospital.
I'd have to see what they were, you know. So I don't know when they were or what they were about. So I'd have to go back and look at all that stuff. So... What's that?
We didn't take a client.
Oh, I don't, I'd have to look. I don't want to give you guys wrong information on any of that stuff. But that's just a little bit about what we're dealing with. And like I said, I do have a good, you know, a good rapport with everybody, very workable. And I do want to have the same with you guys because I do want the streets to be cleaned up. I do want the same outcome as you guys, you know. So that's where we're all, we're just, we just all need to be on the same page, I think, as far as solutions go and how it's going to move forward and stuff. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Super nervous. Commissioner Circle.
Thank you. And just want to say that one of the thick goals with an amendment to the CUP would be to clarify, make sure that everybody is on the same page. So that the city knows what the state requires. Everybody gets to put into that. So there's no expectations that are hidden or unknown. So that's it.
Right. Any other comments? No? All right, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I believe we do have a few more speaker slips.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Yes, Isala Estrada.
Spell your last name for us, Ms. Estrada.
E-S-T-R-A-D-A. Okay. Hi, good night. My name is Isala Estrada and I'm the Assistant Branch Chief for Community Care Licensing, which is a division of the California Department of Social Services. And I oversee this facility. So I'm here today to provide you some information that you may need in order to make a decision in reference to the, to the CUP. Carroll's community has been licensed since 1986 for 70 beds. And that is the CUP we have on file as well. They are licensed as an adult residential facility and they serve a very vulnerable population, as you are aware, very difficult. They are also a recipient of a grant, which was partially part of the California Department of Social Services, which is Community Care Expansion. And the purpose of that grant was to preserve beds and to assist with the homelessness issues that we have in our community. And they have been working diligently with the county. And here are some of the representatives as well. I can honestly say that we have, the state has a great relationship with the operator, with the licensee and with his son. There are some deficiencies, as Mr. Alvy noted. However, this facility is considered in substantial compliance. They are not in any non-compliance. And they work with their licensing program analyst, with the program manager, and also with the regional manager that couldn't be here today, unfortunately. And they, they, they fix everything. There is no facility, we license close to 15,000 facilities in the state. I oversee five counties. And I can honestly tell you that there's no facility with no deficiencies because this is a very difficult population. If they don't have deficiencies, something's wrong, right? So that means maybe we're not there as often as we should be. We also have a program. It's called the Technical Support Program. And we are connecting them with our licensees, especially that serve this population, so that they, it's a free, I would say, it's a free consulting team that come in and help them with anything. And they give them best practices. It's non-punitive. And that is something that the state, really, we don't have a lot of resources, just like a lot of our communities. However, we are investing that in Carols because we need these beds. I have been with the department for over 20 years. I've been with the state for 27. And I can honestly tell you that we, in the last 10 years, we have lost 50% of the beds in this county. And that is only, that's only adding to the homelessness, right? So we really need to preserve these facilities and we need to work and collaborate. I'm really happy to hear that we're here today to collaborate so that we can assist them in preserving these beds that we need. Because if this facility closes, if, not that it would, but if the CUP is revoked, the state would have no choice but to revoke their license. And then what's going to happen with the 70 individuals? They would be part of our community, homeless. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions for, for me, I'm here.
Ms. Estrada, what, what do you do with people who are drug users that are staying in, in these facilities? How do you address that situation? How do you mitigate it?
So this is their home, sir. This is their home. We don't look at it as a facility like an institution. This is, this facility is their home. We have residents in this facility that have been there for 30 years, right? So they, there's, there's programs. The county gets involved. They provide wraparound services. They provide programs to assist these individuals. They collaborate with the licensee to assist them. But at the end of the day, as they mentioned, there are, the Health and Safety Code governs the evictions, not housing. So they would have to go through the department to order these evictions to ensure that they're in compliance with the Health and Safety Code. So there are, we are an enforcement agency, so we don't get involved with the services. That would be like the county, behavioral health, and other individuals that are here as well to support.
What I'm hearing is if it's their home, if they want to do drugs, by all means...
Well, there's house rules. So each facility is required by Title 22 to draft house rules. The, the residents that reside there, they have to abide by these house rules. So if they don't abide by them and to ensure the health and safety of all residents residing in the facility, then they may be evicted for, that's one of five reasons that they, they may be evicted.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Edison?
Real quick, thank you for coming, first of all. But just for free knowledge, is there a 24-hour onsite staff for mental health, like crisis, crisis management, like a 24-hour staff? Do you know or does the owner know, just for free knowledge for me?
Yes. So these facilities that are licensed by the department must have staff present 24 hours a day.
Now, what kind of license? Like a clinical psychiatrist that does crisis intervention? They don't have that?
No, they're, they're not required by law or, or Title 22. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure and I look forward to seeing you again.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just clarify one point.
Yes.
The, the state licensing is different than the conditional use permit. So we have had issues at the city level where the state has authorized increases in capacity. You might remember a few years ago, Literacy First Charter School had increased their capacity and then we identified that and they came forward and amended their CUP. So in this instance, based on city records, it appears that the state had increased the number of beds without consulting with the city on the conditional use permit. I'm not saying, it obviously happened a long time ago and the facility's been operating for a considerable amount of time since then. But I would just note for the record that there, there remains a discrepancy between the conditional use permit, which is the city's permit, and the permit that's issued by the state.
Any, any other speaker cards?
Yes. Mike Phillips.
Good evening. My name's Mike Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S. I am the Senior Director of Patient Advocacy and Housing Services for an organization called Jewish Family Service of San Diego. I oversee, you may or may not have heard of, or I oversee six different safe parking lots throughout the county of San Diego. These are for people that end up sleeping in their cars because they're recently homeless. Also oversee large permanent supportive housing programs for the homeless throughout San Bernardino and Riverside counties. Tonight, I'm wearing the hat of another team I oversee, which is the Patient Advocacy Program. This is mandated by state law, funded by the Behavioral Health Services, who you'll also hear from tonight. It's our responsibility to monitor facilities that have residential and inpatient mental health services. So we're talking about inpatient hospitals. We're talking about boarding cares. We're talking about skilled nursing facilities, long-term care, drug and alcohol facilities, et cetera. I know these facilities. I know these levels of care. I know homelessness very well. And I know what happens when someone falls through the cracks and there isn't a place for them to stay. Isala is absolutely right. 10 years ago, we had well over 100 boarding care facilities with thousands of beds. We are now down to 52 boarding cares throughout the county of San Diego, 760 beds. These beds are like gold. Social workers discharge planners from the hospitals. They desperately need beds for people to be placed. And if they can't do that, then they stay in the hospital. They back up the whole system, which then backs up the emergency room, which then affects our communities and our family members because the whole system's backed up. It's my understanding, and I can't speak with full authority about this, but it's my understanding that the Grossmont complaint was because they had accepted a patient from Carols and for whatever reason, Carols was not able to take that patient back. And so they were filing a complaint. Also, a lot of these providers are mandated reporters and so they need to make complaints if they have concerns. Many of these concerns are not founded in the end, but I don't know the details. I'm not here specifically tonight to speak about Carols because I don't know the specifics, but I think Mr. Edison said it best when he said, "You're doing the Lord's work." We're talking about a vulnerable population. These are human beings. There's a lot of stigma. There's a lot of NIMBYism. It's very easy for us to find problems and there are problems that will occur and use that as a reason to suggest that this should happen elsewhere. And of course, there is no elsewhere. A 70-bed facility is a, is a huge, it's the biggest facility in the county of San Diego, to my awareness. We observe and monitor these facilities. My colleague, Whitney Wilson, is here tonight. She has a specific focus on boarding cares. She goes to Carols on a regular basis. She, we doesn't, we do not get calls, according to Whitney, about any complaints or concerns from the clients. When she visits the site, she says she gets some complaints, which she resolves immediately. Complaints like low-level things like that, the housekeeping individual was, was rude to me, or I didn't get my mail fast enough. So there's, I'm not suggesting there's not problems, although I think it's telling that unless, unless this bites me later on, I don't think there's anybody here tonight to speak against the facility. And I don't want to disrespect Lieutenant Thornton and the police calls. I have suggested, and I'm working on having the facility work with an organization called MCRT. It's a mobile crisis response team, non-law enforcement. They will respond. They're ready. They have capacity to respond to these calls. They're going to put flyers up in the facility. They're going to come out and do trainings for the residents and the staff. This should pull a huge amount of pressure off of law enforcement. They haven't been utilizing this. MCR, I called MCRT, Mary Wood, she's the Regional Director of Operations, and she said, "I've only had like three calls from Carols. We have the capacity. We want these calls. We don't want law enforcement being tied up with this." There's a whole entity that has the capacity to address this. Has to be non-dangerous. If it's dangerous, then that's a different issue. But if it's dangerous, those calls will be rerouted and law enforcement will get involved. So we've arranged for trainings and for meetings and we think that that's going to take the pressure off the situation. I really hope that whatever happens next, you will have the grace and mercy to...
Your time is up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, no, that's, hold on. You might have some questions.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Sure. Any questions, commissioners? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Any other cards?
Yes, we do. Megan O'Dowd.
Please spell your last name, Megan.
Yes, it's O'Dowd, O apostrophe capital D-O-W-d, O'Dowd. So, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Megan O'Dowd. I'm with the County of San Diego, the Department of Behavioral Health Services. I'm the chief. I just want to, I kind of, the items I'll be talking about, a little bit more specificity about the county participation with Carroll's Community Care. But Carroll's Community Care has been applied for competitively and was awarded $2.4 million in Community Care Expansion Preservation Grant funding, as well as Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Grant Funds. These are specific funds to preserve these boarding cares. The stats have already been provided. We've lost thousands of beds. These beds are so critical. We only have 10 facilities that serve this behavioral health population that are contracted with the county. We, we are highly invested in investing in those. And just to note, those were competitive, competitively applied for and they received them. And from the initiation of their application, they did speak to the involvement with the city. And using, we, these funds are for capital funding as well as operating subsidy payments and client services. And so as was noted, we have just point, we have $1.07 million currently under construction at Carroll's Community right now. And we are concerned because we're investing this money and we want to continue this level of service from the 70s forward because these are critical and vital beds. We have just a month left of these capital projects. It's fencing, lighting, new pavement, new windows, new doors, new roofs. So new paint, you know, new paint, new stucco, just all of those cuts my knee that both Don and Brian told us from the very beginning. And we also have been working with some other facilities across El Cajon. There's six others that we are investing millions of dollars in, $9 million that are boarding care facilities in the city of El Cajon. And then we're also working with the fire department to ensure alignment with these activities. So I just want to emphasize, like the grant fundings, where their grant was effective February 1st for the CC Preservation Grant. There's also operating subsidy payments, just over 11,000 a month that we have awarded them. And they could use those funds for staffing, for utilities, taxes, a whole myriad of other things to be able to kind of get to the level where they need to be. Because many of these facilities have deferred maintenance. Many of them are meeting the state licensing requirements, but now we're giving them more funds to be able to kind of get to that higher level of need, especially some of the difficulties after COVID as well. And I don't want to continue on with all of the, kind of the impact. I feel like we've kind of spoken to that about the essential vital part of these beds. Without these services, many would be homeless, experiencing homelessness within potentially the city of El Cajon. They could be diverted to other boarding cares, which are primarily in the city of El Cajon, or seeking a higher level of care, jails, institutions, emergency rooms, crisis centers. And so with that, I, I also want to note, there's 767,000 in addition to those grant funds through Behavioral Health Bridge Housing that are augmented services. So that's a higher level of service for this higher level...
Can you wrap it up?
...facility needs. And then I also want to emphasize the Mobile Crisis Response Team, which is also a county administered program. We can do an in-service at the facility to train the staff and then educate the residents about rather than calling 911 for a mental health crisis, they can call Mobile Crisis Response Team. So thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Any questions, Ms. Dowd? Okay. Thank you.
I have one more card. Philip Curtis.
Okay, so that was the last card then? All right.
Yes, I have no more.
Yes, I have no more cards.
Okay. So, what say you?
Motion to close? Motion to close public hearing?
We didn't open the public hearing.
We never opened a public hearing.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, this, this isn't a public hearing, this was just a request for, from staff to initiate, for the Planning Commission to initiate an amendment to the CUP.
Correct. Well, I'm tending to initiate the amendment, to amend the CUP. CUP 118 and also CUP 631, unless you have some concerns?
Just getting it in line with what, what the state has already given them, I think it's a good idea, having them work together. I know they're spending a lot of money on this facility, it's definitely needed, just sounds like we just need to get it up to date.
Right, exactly. I agree with you. All right, you want to make a motion? Commissioner Rose?
Yeah, I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing to initiate amendments of CUP 118 and 631, or to consider revocation if the use is being operated in a manner not compatible with surrounding uses.
Do you have a second?
Before we second, I don't think we're considering revocation, we're just considering the amendments.
Correct.
So, make sure that that's clear, especially for the audience.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if the motion maker can just confirm that amendment to the motion?
So, we're gonna direct staff to schedule public hearing to initiate amendments of CUP 118 and 630, 631, and revocation is not included in that motion.
Very good. Do I have, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Rose, second by Commissioner Circle, please vote.
And motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right.
Good. Yeah. Any other items for consideration?
No additional items for consideration from staff and no staff communications this evening. Actually, I will give one staff communication. We are going to have a meeting scheduled for April 15th.
Two in one month? Wow. Can we just clarify for the audience what the decision tonight means? Because we don't have a timetable out for them to know what to expect next.
So as next steps, staff will be reaching out to the county and the state, as well as the applicant, and we will be working with them to prepare a more robust set of conditions of approval that we will bring back to the Planning Commission. Staff will ensure that those conditions of approval are in compliance with states and all applicable laws.
Thank you. And you will get notification. Okay.
Any commissioner reports? None?
No.
I move to adjourn. Please vote. You need to vote on that? No?
Motion carries by unanimous vote.